All right, I'd like to call this special committee of the whole meeting, public hearing to order. This is June 5th at 6:00 PM. Addie, would you please call the roll?
Cobb.
Here.
Kuta.
Here.
Petrus.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Maddox. Russell. Posh.
All right, well, welcome to the 12th Annual Democracy Day Public Hearing. Yay! And the purpose of Democracy Day is, from Cleveland Heights Codified Ordinance, Chapter 183, Political Influence by Corporate Entities. Boo! So, how it works, speakers are going to have five minutes. And please fill out the, if anybody's here that wants to make a comment, make sure you fill out the comment request form and give that to Addie.
You only need to fill one out if you are not already on the agenda, so.
And there are, one, two, three.
We have...
There are nine people on the agenda. All right, so, I guess Greg Coleridge, you would be up first. Welcome. We're not starting your five minutes yet. We didn't work in the costume change. Monsanto, BP, Havi Lavi, the Koch Brothers, Alaberton.
Well, good evening. My name is Greg Coleridge, co-director of the National Move to Men Campaign, 3016 Somerton Road. Happy Democracy Day. Thank you all for being here this evening. The Move to Men movement to abolish corporate constitutional rights and money as free speech continues to expand. Over 520,000 signatures on our petition, 803 organizational endorsers, eight states have passed either municipal resolutions or ballot initiatives. 725 municipalities have done the same, including Cleveland Heights, in 2013 passing a ballot initiative with, as you know, 77% of the vote. The 2024 election is exhibit number, I don't know, somewhere in the hundreds of thousands, why the judge made doctrines of money as speech and a corporation as a person is so democratically destructive. Corporate interests and mega billionaires backed Trump in 2024. They are now cashing in on their political investments. If the Trump regime gets its way, corporate entities will benefit from the Doge-led oblitterations of environmental, financial, food safety, and scores of other government corporate regulations. Government will significantly be dismantled to usher in privatization corporatization, which transforms public services into private/corporate mega power, control and profit. Billionaires and corporations will profit from $3.7 trillion in tax cuts, paid for by Medicaid and SNAP cuts, and a ballooning federal debt. Crypto corporations have already benefited by receiving a strategic Bitcoin reserve in U.S. digital asset stockpile. And finally, while serving as a special government employee and head of Doge, Elon Musk, according to a recent report by Senator Elizabeth Warren, saw his net worth increase by over $100 billion due to numerous decisions and actions. Now Musk invested $288 million to the Trump campaign. Do the math. A $100 billion increase in net worth comes to a return on investment of, ready for this, 34,622%. I don't know about you, but if I get 3% from my bank, I feel like I'm doing well. A majority of this, of course, can be blamed on this. What is it? It's simply a box. You're in it, by the way. Can you see yourself? You're in it. I'm in it. Yeah, I can barely see it, the short guy there with the cane. We're all in it. What is this box? It is, if you will, the metaphorical Constitution of the United States. The box is that which defines the parameters of what you and I can do. What is legal? What is not legal? What is possible? What is doable? Yes, we need to elect better people, people like yourselves. Yes, we need better laws and statutes, unquestionably. Yes, we need better regulations, administrative regulations, no doubt. But all of it is constrained by this box. And this box contains, through the original confines of the Constitution and amendments since, very great numbers of antidemocratic provisions. A couple of which are money being defined as free speech and a corporation being defined as a person. Both judge-made doctrines that go back to the 1970s, in the case of Buckley versus Valeo equating money as free speech, and corporations being defined as persons, hey, that goes back to the 1880s. But those are what constrains us from achieving real democracy, justice, peace, a sustainable environment in all of its forms and in so many ways. So what Move to Men is trying to do is sort of abolish the box, at least that part of it, by saying that no longer can corporations being defined as people. They are, in fact, entities of creations of we the people through charters. And money should not be defined as free speech. Money is property. If money is speech, those who have the most money have the most speech. So what can be done? Well, we can all do something. Everyone can go to our website, movedto men.org, study up on the We the People Amendment, bone up on corporate constitutional rights, we have a webpage on that, share our website postings on email, like us, you know, on all the, my Twitter faces, Facebook, Twitter, Blue Sky, Instagram, TikTok. For public officials like yourself, you can sign our pledge to amend. I will hand out copies of this if you are a candidate running for office. And encourage other communities to pass a resolution and help get this passed at Cogge County Council. Lastly, I will end by just saying, for those here or watching, sign our petition by going to movedto men.org/motion, share our petition, and join us here. No King's Day is coming up, a week from Saturday, right? Join us to petition and get the word out. And lastly, resist and do what one can. Request that organizations you're connected with to endorse our effort. You know, it's ultimately, my friends, up to us to bring about the change that we require. We need friends on the inside, people who are elected, no question. We also need a social movement, a democracy movement, that for the very first time, very first time, creates real authentic democracy. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Madeline Watts. She had a handout.
My name is Madeline Watts and I live in South Euclid. I'm going to speak on the consequences of media dominance by corporations. In a recent discussion, Angelo Carason, president of Media Matters, a nonprofit media watchdog and currently being investigated by the Trump Media Organization, addressed the absolute media dominance, a stranglehold that right-wing media has on our information. He observed it is right-wing media where real information power exists. Right-wing media has a narrative dominance in our country and is organized to keep power. As a result, our information landscape is incredibly and deeply lopsided. Carason said, looking at the top news sources, social media, TV, radio, Twitter, you name it, the top 500 or so sources of news, the place where people go to get their information, for 82% of Americans, they turn to right-wing media for their source of information. That's a four-to-one advantage for right-wing media. Is it any wonder we are so uninformed and misinformed about truth and news? Any messages by Democrats, independents, or anyone has to be understood, and in order to understand, it first has to be heard. Even when they have a good, solid message, that message has to be distributed, spread and heard and connected. That is the real challenge. The question is, can a factual message be distributed and grasped by the audience in a landscape that is so incredibly uneven? Carason said, time and time again, right-wing media does what he calls the Rumpelstiltskin effect, taking any bad effects, harm, and consequences of their lies and spinning it in such a way that something positive that gets into something positive that gets people to believe it is a benefit to them. Currently, there are three large media corporations that lean right-wing, Sinclair Broadcast Group, iHeart Media, and Salem Communications. I'm going to focus on one example of the long-term dangers and threat to fact-based journalism that the Sinclair Broadcast Corporation poses. This right-wing corporation owns an enormous share of stations and media networks across the country and has spent years acquiring local news stations and turning them into mini Fox News outlets. As of this year, Sinclair has 294 television stations in 88, 89 markets. That is nearly one quarter of all local stations in America. In Ohio, Sinclair has media networks in Cincinnati, Columbus, Dayton, Steubenville, and Toledo. Sinclair includes radio, talk radio, YouTube channels, Facebook pages, entire websites promoting inaccurate and dangerous information. Sinclair requires its local stations to air editorials and slanted commentary. What makes Sinclair so dangerous is it hides behind the face of trusted local anchors, news anchors, and reporters. Corporate Sinclair is feeding America slanted political propaganda. Most people don't even realize it's happening. In case you're wondering about Cleveland, northeast Ohio has a sympathetic right-wing media group in iHeart Media. Across the nation, iHeart Media owns more than 870 radio stations, making it the country's largest owner of radio stations, as well as numerous other media outlets and digital networks. But the most concerning issue is not just the right-wing media pushes lies, but that mainstream media is backing down from truth and caving in out of fear. One current example. Recently Paramount, the corporation that owns CBS, offered $15 million to settle a lawsuit over a 60-minute interview. The Trump administration demanded $25-plus million and a formal apology. At the same time, Paramount was seeking an $8 billion merger with Skydance Media Corporation and needed the cooperation of the White House. Rather than defend 60 Minutes, Paramount, hoping to make a business deal, gave in. In Trump's America, corporate media is not defending the First Amendment. Instead, corporate media writes checks protecting their bottom line, corporate interests. Information is not about truth or facts anymore. Media bias has capitulated and morphed into a blighted and decay that spreads from Sinclair into CBS, ABC, and other mainstream media. While journalists technically are still protected by the First Amendment, honest and factual journalism is dying from a lack of courage, not a lack of facts. This is one example of corporate personhood illegally usurping our constitutional right as citizens. If you are concerned, if this is a concern of yours, read more about it on the page that was on your chair. Thank you.
Karla Moutenberg.
I would like everybody to see my T-shirt.
Okay.
Karla Moutenberg, Cleveland Heights. I'm here tonight to ask the city of Cleveland Heights and everyone here to reject packaged police surveillance. For this testimony, I've relied on information published by the Electronic Frontier Foundation, EFF, which is warning local governments not to let their police departments become dependent on one technology vendor. Companies that once sold a single technology, such as automated license plate readers or gunshot detection sensors, are buying up other tech firms and law enforcement data brokers in order to become one-stop shops for police surveillance needs. As such, surprise, surprise, these vendors are pushing police to buy more than they need. If some surveillance is good, more surveillance must be better. If a police department already buys body-worn cameras, that's the term, from a company, the department likely will also be offered a free trial of the newest equipment or software that vendor is currently hawking. These companies often help police access special funding to help them buy whatever suite of services the firm is pushing. Cities and towns should beware the bundle. Bundling results in police departments paying for technology gimmicks they perhaps should not and maybe never will use, and it's anti-competitive. Bundling keeps prices high and rising while capturing, as customers, police who soon discover they have about as much choice about tech vendors as Cleveland Heights citizens do in choosing between Spectrum or AT&amp;T. Not much choice at all. EFF identifies some of the big players preparing themselves to follow our movements, analyze our actions, store all the data, and make us, the taxpayers, pay for a whole bundle of privacy invasions. They include Axon Enterprises, which started with the Taser, an electronic stun gun, and then moved into the body cam market, of which it now controls about 85%. From there, Axon's Evidence.com platform became one of the most frequently used police records management systems. Axon also offers cloud storage, drones, connected private cameras, virtual reality training, and more. Second is the company Flock Safety, whose first products were automated license plate readers, which use a camera to recollect the make, model, location, and other information that Flock can use for what it calls vehicle fingerprinting. Flock's database stores and shares data on how, where, and when every one is driving and parking their vehicles. Axon, that first company, recently announced that it will start selling a competing product. Third, we have Motorola Solutions, offering its so-called ecosystem of products and services. Fourth, we have Sound Thinking, which began as Spot Shot, excuse me, Shot Spotter, but soon developed the strategy it calls upsell/cross-sell, that relies on data integration and artificial intelligence to create their smart safety platform. I will close with a quote from our friends at the Electronic Frontier Foundation, and they are friends to democracy-loving citizens everywhere. Quote, "The next time you come across body-worn cameras or another piece of tech on your city council's agenda or police department's budget, take a closer look to see what other strings and surveillance tools might be attached. You are not just looking at one line item on a sheet. It's probably an ongoing subscription to a whole package of equipment designed to challenge your privacy, and no sort of discount makes that a price worth paying." Thank you very much.
Anne Caruso.
I'm Anne Caruso. I live at 2273 Bell Field Avenue. And this is something I didn't know until March, but last year, the World Meteorological Organization confirmed that 2024 was the warmest year on record. We knew that. But it had a global average service temperature of 1.55 degrees Celsius above pre-industrial levels. You may recall that the Paris Climate Accords had a goal of limiting global warming on the planet to 1.5 degrees Celsius above pre-industrial levels. So we have hit the level of warming that we should not exceed to avert catastrophic climate change. The first global warming climate study was done in 1990, and we have increased emissions by 60% since then. We have not reduced greenhouse gas emissions. In fact, each year, they have increased, including right now. Coincidentally, the oil and gas industry has substantially increased its political contributions in election cycles from approximately $12 million in 1990 to $66 million approximately in last year's 2024 election cycle. And the majority of their money goes to the Republicans, although some of it goes to the Democrats. The oil and gas industry is one of the top lobby groups in our country, and legislation in Ohio reflects that. Here are some examples. In recent years, the Ohio Legislature has passed laws that put roadblocks in front of large-scale wind and solar farms. Ohio has the country's highest turbine setback law, which means the distance between the turbine and the property lines. That limits the number of turbines that can be put on a property for a wind farm, which, of course, limits its profitability. In Ohio, a community can vote no at any stage of a large-scale solar farm, making such an investment extremely risky. Yet communities have no say whether to allow fracking wells in their communities or whether to allow injection wells used to dispose of the toxic radioactive fracking waste. Another example of laws that benefit the oil and gas industry is passage of HB 308 right at the end of last year. This law increases from six years to eight years the amount of time a company can frac under our treasured state parks and other public lands. How popular can it be to pass fracking wells 400 feet from the state park you're visiting in order to experience the beauty and solace of nature? Very crazy. As a last example, the National Natural Resources Committee of the Ohio House is right now considering HB 170, and that's a bill that spells out how and where carbon capture and storage will be implemented in Ohio. Climate scientists say trillions of tons of carbon must be taken out of the atmosphere because we have failed to decrease what we put in. But there's no evidence that carbon capture and storage can do that on a large scale, large enough to make a difference. It does, however, keep money flowing into the oil and gas industry, which uses the carbon captured carbon to wring out the very last drops of oil from its old oil wells. Kevin Anderson, a climate professor at the University of Manchester, is on a mission to explain that we are in a frightening situation with climate change and that our efforts are not reflecting the emergency we're facing. He points out that there just isn't enough clarity in the media, and even with many climate experts, about how dire our situation is. He says people everywhere need to speak up about this crisis and speak to other people, speak to the mass media, speak to government officials, and make this a common topic and concern. In America especially, money talks, and it is drowning out the clear reality that we must transition away from fossil fuels or subject our children, grandchildren, and generations after them to a difficult, painful existence on a planet whose climate disruption will wreak havoc with food production, safe shelter, and just about every other aspect of life on Earth. Thank you.
Wendy Durrey.
Good evening. Thank you for coming this evening. I am Wendy Durrey. I am the chair of the Cleveland Heights, University of Heights, chapter of the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland. To my fellow citizens, our system of democracy is in trouble, in serious trouble. On April 17th, the League of Women Voters, the National League of Women Voters, issued the following declaration. "It has now been 87 days since the start of President Trump's administration. From the flagrant disregard for congressional authority and governmental checks and balances to defying our fundamental protections of the rule of law, one thing is abundantly clear: Our country is in a constitutional crisis. We, the people, must fight back. The foundational principles that have sustained our democracy, the checks and balances, the rule of law, free and fair elections, are under direct and sustained threat. In this extraordinary moment, we cannot proceed with business as usual. All Americans, no matter who you voted for in 2024, need to come together, stand united, and fight back to save our democracy. We cannot afford to fail the generations to come." And the danger isn't just at the federal level. Our state of Ohio is also at great risk. We in the league watched in horror last year, as a citizen-led initiative to change the way we draw districts was inadvertently, I would say, voted down by the people, thanks to the great power of deception and misdirection by our state's leaders, which followed their blatant disregard of the rulings by the Ohio Supreme Court to, in fact, draw fair districts. Thanks to our heavily skewed districts now in Ohio, many people see little point in voting. And what is at the bottom of the federal and state levels of government? It's the corrupting power of money, the dark money, and frankly, now, the fully illuminated money. We've all heard that Elon Musk openly donated some $280 million to President Trump's campaign, and we are watching the president and his family enrich themselves by selling their own Bitcoins and granting personal access to the highest bidders. And the money is flowing at the state level as well, from lobbyists and corporations and wealthy outsiders. How else to explain the great wealth accumulated by people who work as elected officials at very modest salaries? We are still dealing with the debacle that was Senate Bill 6, and the latest crime is the funneling of state dollars to private and religious schools away from public schools because, well, who owns those private schools? We have known since the passage of Citizens United that money would become an ever-more corrupting force, and now we are seeing it on full display. But we, the people, are not powerless, though it may feel that way at this moment. We must continue to advocate, to mobilize, to educate our fellow citizens. We must stand together as communities, supporting each other, and continuing to fight for what is right. Democracy is not a spectator sport." Thank you.
Steve Norris.
Good evening. I'm Steve Norris in Lakewood. In 2025, corporations are still gaining new rights that used to be reserved for human beings, this time pardons. Too often, fines for breaking the law are treated just as a cost of doing business. Corporations combine their constitutional rights with huge amounts of monies that communities and everyday Americans just can't match. HDR Global Trading, the owner of crypto exchange BitMEX, was pardoned by Trump. The company and four employees, including Bitcoin booster Arthur Hayes, pleaded guilty to violating the Bank Secrecy Act, which requires companies to have an anti-money laundering program. The pardon wiped away $100 million in fines. This is the first time that a corporation has received a full pardon. The pardon is consistent with the Trump administration's pro-corporate agenda. Over 100 investigations or actions have been stopped in the first two months, according to Public Citizen. Included in this are cryptocurrency corporations, which were big political donors. Trump and family members also benefit from various crypto schemes. Pardons are fast and only require the stroke of a Sharpie to free a corporation from accountability. This contrasts with courts, which can take years to prosecute. Corporations can defend themselves with their Supreme Court granted rights and delay judgment for years as cases wind through appeals. Rick Claypool of Public Citizen said, "Putting corporate pardons on the table strengthens Trump's corrupt and authoritarian power over corporations. This has the potential to trigger a lobbying frenzy for any corporation that has faced federal enforcement." He added, "If you're a corporation in a favored industry, you can break the law, you can get caught, you can be prosecuted and sentenced with $100 million fine, and it doesn't matter." The pardons are part of a larger retreat from corporate crime enforcement with foreign clients. Corrupt Practices Act frozen. Beyond fines, convicted corporations face being barred from federal contracts. HDR Global Trading is incorporated in the seashells. It's an island nation in the Indian Ocean labeled a tax haven by the Tax Justice Network. In addition to pardoning BitMEX, Trump commuted the probation and fines of Ozymedia that collapsed under fraud allegations. There is hope to hold corporations accountable and move from oligarchy to a republic. The We the People Amendment, HDR 54, will break the power of corporations to treat money as speech and reserve constitutional rights to human being. It's time for a government that answers to we the people. Thanks.
Dean Sieg.
Dean Sieg, 2547 Bolton Road. I'm announcing a new organization. It's called SOB, an acronym for Sick of Billionaires. Its mission is to expose and protest the influence of billionaires in government. The guilty names that come to mind, like Zuckerberg, Bezos, Thiel, and Musk, are national figures. But the governmental influence of the hyper wealthy can also be found right here at home. A local billionaire has usurped the power of the state of Ohio as he pursues his plan, contrary to the will of the elected leaders and the populace, to build a $2.4 billion sports complex for his lackluster team outside of municipal Cleveland. In response, Cleveland Mayor Justin Bibb used the word scheme, saying to fans, "It'll raise your taxes, make it more expensive for you to attend games, and steal events away from downtown Cleveland to pay for their stadium." Kigget County Executive Chris Ronain called the proposal a boondoggle and said Haslam's overly optimistic financial projections are based on unrealistic assumptions. Moreover, a move to Brook Park would weaken the city's downtown area and harm local businesses. Any such project should be funded entirely by private investment, he said. Even Republican Governor Mike DeWine opposed Haslam's plan, saying, "Ohio doesn't have the money for such a project. We can't really afford to continue to put money in sports stadiums out of a general fund." In polling, a clear majority of voters, 61%, opposed the Browns' move, including 51% strongly opposed. Only 28% supported the move. The opposition even shows up in the public's attitude toward the team itself. The Guardians and Cavaliers were viewed favorably by 90% of respondents, while the Browns rated only 49% approval, with 50% unfavorable, and some said the Browns were divisive. But billionaires and their boosters don't really care what elected officials or mere citizens think. They can buy whatever they want, including legislators in the Ohio Gerrymander Assembly. When County Exec Ronain said that the Brook Park project should be funded with private money, that was something Haslam could easily do. His personal wealth totals $8.5 billion of the total family wealth of $14.4 billion. But why should he buy an expensive sports complex when he can buy himself a legislature for a much smaller investment and then get the people's money for his project? Call it a public-private partnership, one of those deals that offer socialism for the wealthy developer until it gets built and capitalism for the owner after it gets built. In this case, of course, the developer and the owner are both the same, Jimmy Haslam. Since 2020, the Haslam family has given at least $1,145,000 to Ohio legislators and ballot issues, 94% to Republicans who hold the power, and to ensure those investments, $100,000 to oppose Issue One to keep gerrymandered districts safely in GOP hands. In particular, House Speaker Matt Huffman receives significantly more from the Haslams than any other Ohio politician, almost $110,000 since 2020, including $61,000 in 2024, alone when Huffman ran unopposed. Two other influential legislators, Senators McAuliffe and Serino, received significant donations when they were not up for reelection either. Maybe more gift than contribution. For his part, Huffman said, "There is no donor or group, no matter what they do or how much money they give, that can really affect the outcome of legislation." He said that with a straight face, but he has a lot of practice. At this point, it looks like any stadium may be financed with money from the unclaimed funds pot of some $4.3 billion, a scheme designed to mitigate the unseemly appearance of using general funds. But even then, as Ronain notes, this is the people's money that would be used for private gain. So if you want to join my club, SOB, it's pretty easy. All you have to do is find a billionaire and expose his or her grifting underbelly. It's not hard. These days, there are a lot to choose from.
Suzanne Tigatano. Oh, okay. And last but not least, Francis Chiappa. Well, in that case, let's open it up to others who may want to get up and speak. Others? Yes. Well, that's where I would go next, but are you sure? I'm not... Okay. Counsel. Gail, you always go first. Not that you have to, but...
Thank you, Tony. This is my fourth Democracy Day since I started on counsel. I'm sorry. And I have to say, the move to amend organization has always impressed me as a group of people that care deeply about what's happening in our country. So thank you for doing this this evening. My dad fought in World War II for six years, and I am so happy he's not alive now because this would have thoroughly disheartened him in terms of what's happening federally and state level. And I'm frightened for my daughter because of privatization of public schools. I'm frightened for all of us for the cleanliness that we expect in our air and water quality and our food supply being challenged because the EPA is being deregulated and dismembered practically. So all of the different agencies that we've seen where people have been fired and let go, people who had jobs that kept us safe and gave us a quality of life that we enjoy in America, moments like this hearten me. So I thank you very much for being here this evening and for all of you that are watching. I hope that you enjoyed it as much as I did, and also I'm encouraged. So thank you.
All right. I think Francis is here. You have five minutes, sir. Sure.
I'm thinking you may be happy to be dealing with international and national issues for once. The local issues have been a little vexing, I know, to put it mildly. So I want to talk about genocide and politics and money. In the wake of Hamas' barbarous attacks and the hostage-taking on October 7th, 2023, Israel's strong response could be expected, but the disproportionate magnitude of that response became clearer over time. Hamas sites and personnel were targeted, but with seemingly little concern for noncombatant casualties. Whole neighborhoods were reduced to rubble, hospitals, schools, and virtual infrastructure gone. Food supplies were blocked. The United Nations Office for the Coordination of Humanitarian Affairs offers these estimates of Palestinian casualties as of May 14th, 2025. Imagine if anything of this magnitude had happened in Cleveland Heights. Almost 53,000 killed. Of these women were 8,300, children were 15,600. There were almost 120,000 people injured. Food insecurity has afflicted 100% of the population. 88.8% of schools in Gaza have been destroyed. 69% of all structures are damaged, and 81% of the road network is damaged or destroyed. Genocide is defined by the Genocide Convention of 1951 as, quote, "Act committed with intent to destroy in whole or in part a national, ethnic, racial, or religious group," unquote. Israel's withholding of food and medicine, along with the numbers above, suggests genocide. Furthermore, the Trump administration or Trump's plan embraced by Prime Minister Netanyahu to remove Gazans and build a new city would be brazen settler colonialism and would certainly qualify as genocide. It's hard not to see Israel's actions over the last 18 months as an intent to destroy Gaza. According to an AP report in October 2024, Israel is the biggest recipient of U.S. military aid in history, getting over $251 billion in inflation-adjusted dollars since 1959. The $17.9 billion spent since October 7, 2023, in inflation-adjusted dollars is by far the most military aid sent to Israel in one year. And most of the U.S. weapons delivered in the year were munitions from artillery shells... I'm sorry, much of the U.S. weapons were munitions from artillery shells to 2,000-pound bunker busters and precision-guided bombs. The defense industry, the bomb makers, profit handsomely whenever there's armed conflict, and this time is no different. Bob Dylan condemned those who, quote, "build all the bombs" as the masters of war. The lyrics were harsh, but corporate leaders must bear some responsibility for what's happening in Gaza. After the Holocaust and the extermination of 6 million Jews, it seemed fitting that traumatized people should have their own country. An unquestioned and unquestioning allegiance between the U.S. and Israel began. Since 1948, Israel has been taking Palestinian land continuously and often by force. Palestinians are also deeply traumatized now, and Israel is the cause. But in the U.S., it's taboo to talk about this. Advocacy for Palestine can be labeled anti-Semitic, and candidates criticizing Israel can draw big-money opposition in the next election. Now, at the Academy Awards this year, a film called No Other Land won the Best Documentary. It's about Palestinian life in the West Bank and how much more dangerous it has become since October 2023. It's an important story that is well told, but No Other Land has not found a U.S. distributor. You cannot see it in theaters, you can't stream it. Any other Oscar winner would have had a distributor, but this one documents the dark side of Israel. How do we escape this cycle of hatred and violence and stop the genocide in Gaza? How do we begin to see the situation from both sides? I wouldn't count on our leaders, they're too afraid, bound by money, power, and influence. We, the people, need to start speaking about it or to speak more about it. Let's talk to each other. Let's hear all the stories. I would add that No Other Land, Cleveland Peace Action and some other groups are screening No Other Land this Sunday, 2:30 PM at Pilgrim Congregational Church on West 14th Street in Tremont. It's a fundraiser for Masafar Yada. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, all the speakers. Any other counsel people want to make a comment? Councilman Petrus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Democracy Day is about more than just fulfilling a legal obligation. It's a moment for us as a community to reflect on the health of our democracy and the forces that shape it. We've heard powerful testimony tonight about how corporate influence and unregulated political spending continue to distort our electoral process and silence the voices of ordinary citizens. The people of Cleveland Heights passed Issue 32 because they believe that democracy should belong to people, not to corporations, and not to those with the deepest pockets. That message remains as urgent today as it was in 2013. I want to thank each of you for the time that you took to share your perspectives and your passion. Your voices matter, and by showing up tonight, you've honored the spirit of participatory democracy. Let's carry that spirit forward, not just on Democracy Day, but throughout the year, as we work to build a government that truly reflects the will of the people. Thank you.
Councilman Cobb?
I want to thank everyone for coming tonight and their thoughtful remarks. It's kind of distressing and depressing that it seems that the attendance for this event every year gets smaller and smaller. And I'm wondering if that's just a symptom of our having been beat down by what's going on with this spending by these big corporations and the right-wing media taking things over that people don't seem to care anymore. So for those of you that are here tonight, this is important, and a special thanks goes to you for coming tonight, and I hope next year that we can have triple this attendance. In fact, I'd like to see the room overflowing, and maybe Mr. Muskel gives some money to help do that, since the bromance is apparently over.
I was thinking about, I think it was called the Bipartisan... McCain-Fangold. I think it was the Bipartisan Reform Campaign Act, 2002, so like 23 years ago. It's almost like, when you think about it, you think, oh, wasn't that cute? They tried to, you know, make some rules so everybody would play fair in this game with money in politics. And I remember at the time, one, it was a Republican senator in opposition to McCain-Fangold, got up and said, you know, there's not enough money in politics, and was real dogmatic about it. And I remember that, I don't remember his name, but I remember he was an oddball in that moment. But now, it would be like, you know, it's just things have changed. I'm listening to all the topics today: police surveillance, invasion of privacy, climate change, fossil fuels, this constitutional crisis, gerrymandering, Bitcoin pardons, SOB, the Browns moving and the Haslams and so forth, all this. And I just think of how much has changed just in 20 years and how money has become so much more part of the mainstream. I am concerned, as somebody brought up, these executive orders that keep coming without any checks and balances or separation of powers, you know, our basic governmental principles. And I, you know, I go back to Benjamin Franklin saying, you know, yeah, we have a democracy if we can keep it. And I am wondering if we can keep it. I mean, it's occurred to me that it's in danger, and I think that's where this is all coming from. So I just want to pledge to you and to my colleagues here that I think the role that we play locally, because this is where things start. You know, I've said to this mayor, you're not going to get everything you want. That's not what this government is about. We're going to review everything. We're not going to be recalcitrant. But no legislative body should be a rubber stamp. That's not our job. I see it happening at the federal level, you know, certainly a lot more than anywhere else, but, you know, we have this one-party rule at the State House, and it's very troubling. So again, thank you all for caring and for sharing, and I'm going to hope for what Councilman Cobb is hoping for, some more attendance and a gathering. Cobb is hoping for, some more attendance and a gathering and a snowball effect of this movement. This meeting is adjourned.